Welcome, everyone. If we could call this meeting to order. If we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you.
Okay, our first item for this evening is adoption of the agenda.
We do have an addition? No, that's already on here. Any other additions? All right, seeing none, we'll adopt the agenda.
Next, we have item 3.1, Adoption of the Minutes of December 18th Regular Medicine Hat City Council Meeting, on page 3.
Any errors or missions? All right, seeing none, we'll adopt the minutes.
Next, we have presentation. Our first presentation is item 4.1, Thrive: Medicine Hat and Region. And we have presenting tonight Karen Danielson, Executive Director and CEO of Thrive, and Dr. Alina Turner, the Principal for Turner Strategies.
Welcome, Ms. Daniels and Dr. Turner. I invited them to speak to council tonight. Karen has been hired as our new executive director, I'm going to say, five weeks?
It's getting, I think we're maybe at six, yeah.
Six, okay. And to give an update on the Thrive, so you have the floor.
Thank you, and we do have a PowerPoint with us tonight. And each one of you will also have a copy of our abridged version of our strategy report. So, thank you, your worship, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about Thrive: The Medicine Hat and Region Strategy to End Poverty and Increase Well-Being. As mentioned, my name is Karen Danielson, and I am the Executive Director and CEO for Thrive. Tonight, there are also members of Thrive's Council of Champions present. We have your worship, Mayor Clugston. We have Mr. Chris Hellman, Ms. Jamie Rogers, Ms. Selena Simmons, and we have Dr. Denise Henning as well. I also want to introduce my co-presenter, Dr. Alina Turner, who will be announcing a new and innovative application to the support and work of Thrive. So, I'll just do a brief introduction of Thrive for everyone, and then I will let Alina come and present her new and innovative application. So, we have Thrive. Our vision. Thrive was launched on February 15th of 2017. This strategy is tasked with finding meaningful and impactful ways to end poverty and increase well-being in Medicine Hat and Region by 2030. Each of you have this version of this document in front of you today. The five foundational principles that Thrive uses to guide its work are as follows. Everyone has an equal right to justice, education, personal security, and privacy; work, cultural, political, and recreational participation. Our approach is person-centered and community-driven. To end poverty, we must prevent it in the first place. Ending poverty and increasing well-being requires a collective effort. And finally, social chain requires innovation. Now, we also have, and that's what I'm excited to tell you a bit more today, are these 13 priority areas that Thrive is based around, and it is led by the Council of Champions, which is formed with those of lived experience, government, non-for-profit, education, and business leaders in the Medicine Hat region. Now, these 13 priority areas include leadership and systems change, community systems planning, income security, business innovation, energy poverty, affordable housing, homelessness, food security, transportation, health and wellness, learning and literacy, resilient families, and finally, community safety. Along with the Council of Champions, we have been busy working to put these principles and priorities into action. And tonight, I'm excited to share with you one of these key action items that we've worked So, this particular action item relates not only to the one that I'm going to present in front of you, but many other pieces of our key action and priority items. So, we know from experience that when community members are in crisis, it is essential that they have timely access to supports and resources. We must find better ways of coordinating our resources and ensuring the right matching of supports to meet our community members' needs, when they need it, and in the real time. And this requires innovation. This community is known for developing innovative solutions which address social issues, and I would like to now pass my presentation along to Dr. Alina Turner for her announcement of HelpSeeker.org and how it will address the development of Real Service Map: Time for Medicine Hat and Region.
Thank you, and thank you for having me in your community again. My background in working with Medicine Hat has really come from the homeless-serving sector and supporting Jamie and the folks at Medicine Hat Community Housing Society on the plan to end homelessness. So, that's a bit of the background in how I came to this work. And I was privileged to also be brought in on the poverty strategy and Thrive. But much of the learnings that we're applying to Thrive are coming from our, what we saw as great success on the homelessness file. One of the key learnings we've had in the homeless-serving sector, and in turn, when we look at the poverty reduction strategy and what we heard from people with lived experience, as well as policymakers and service providers, is that oftentimes, people might actually not know where to go for help, and that seems to be a consistent theme. The resources might be in the community, but people don't know how to navigate them. They don't even know what's out there, if they're eligible for them. And not only that, but these services change all the time because of funding, criteria, et cetera. In one of the consultations we had, a community member said, "Well, honestly, if we can do apps for a particular type of beer in a particular type of liquor store, how can we not help people that actually need a service get the help they need?" So, point being is, technology has evolved considerably, and much of our lives have become automated, and the search processes have become quite advanced. But unfortunately, those technologies haven't been applied to our sector. And in some ways, that's the sector that needs innovation the most, because that's where we can actually make a significant difference. So, rather than saying, "Well, somebody should do that," we said, "Well, let's just do it ourselves. And let's develop an application that actually matches services with people's needs, that people can actually access in real time. Let's make sure that that application is free for users. Let's make sure that that architecture is applicable from a global perspective, so that what we innovate locally here can actually benefit Calgary, Edmonton, rural B.C., anywhere in Canada. Let's make sure it's translatable, because we have newcomer populations all over our country, including Medicine Hat. And let's make sure that it's accessible not just to people who have iPhones or Androids, but it's accessible from a diverse type of platform." So, that's exactly what's been happening over the past several months, is developing this web-based application. It's going to be launched next week, so you're getting the sneak peek. Nobody knows about it yet, but we thought it would be an important place to start this conversation in Medicine Hat with all of you and the Council of Champions here tonight. So, HelpSeeker will, like I said, be available online, free to use, for people in need, if I can click.
It is coming out.
It's coming. There we go. And here are some of the resources that can be accessible to somebody looking for assistance. So, you can see there, housing, shelters, domestic violence, recreation, counseling, et cetera, addictions, education, on and on, and more. Really, it's not limited. The filters in what is available are not necessarily limited to what's up here. They are controlled by the super-admin of the application. So, we can add to these over time. Okay, so like I mentioned before, that we can access this from tablets, from desktops, and diversity of smartphones as well. And again, we know that people living in poverty have actually considerable access to technology today. The decrease in technology costs, also the ability or availability of access to the Internet in libraries and other free spaces and program spaces means that people actually do use technology significantly. We also know that programs that are serving people in need have access to technology as well, so that matching can happen in real time between service providers and those in need. So, essentially, if you're going to put it in a couple of bullet points, it's a one-stop online shop to connect those in need with programs and resources. It's web-based, like I mentioned before. The data will be hosted in Canada through the Azure web hosting service. It's cloud, but it's got a Canadian server, because again, we want it to be FOIP compliant as well. It's not collecting personal information, so that we protect people's privacy. Sorry, guys, technology. It uses geolocation and filters to get the best match for users. In other words, it can actually allow you to search for near you, so 10 kilometers or 30 kilometers around you. And essentially, what happens is that programs in your community would sign up to be on this app, and then they would select the filters. So, are you serving domestic violence, mental health, et cetera? What location are you serving? Because we know, for instance, that some programs in Medicine Hat actually serve a broader region, so they're not just focused in a particular area. And they would become part of this database that's free and accessible for everyone to use. Okay? And in terms of the cost for this, my initial assessment of what it's going to actually take to run this was free for Medicine Hat, because you're testing it. However, I've also had feedback that people actually want to contribute to this, so it might be a social enterprise, but programs that are signing up would like to see value in contributing to it to keep it free of bugs and future development and to assist in the hosting costs. So, we've actually developed a formula that's $10 per year per program. What's going to happen over the next couple of months is that we would have this ability to advance the Thrive strategy through this work. We would obviously be able to test this app in a city that is known for its social innovation, so it's got considerable buy-in. Obviously, we're here tonight. Clearly, this is a priority for you. So, we can actually develop a pretty solid test case for the app locally. So, over the next months, we're going to be pushing the app through the homeless-serving system as the first phase, and then it would be available throughout the community. And as I mentioned before, the first six months are free, and then it would be a 10-year annual fee. And it's essentially a cost-recovery approach to make sure that we can cover the cost of operating the model. It's a social enterprise at its finest. Okay, so obviously, there's an opportunity here to highlight Medicine Hat's innovation in the social sphere, and we obviously need to get on top of the media strategy and relationships with government, because the applicability of this will be much beyond our city again. And I would look to the Thrive Council of Champions to assist in that. If you have any further questions, these would be available in your package. So, data ownership, app maintenance, the fees, I highlighted these before, and the data storage. Like I said, Azure is a Microsoft product, so they're hosting what happened to the highest security standards and would be within Canada. The data that's put in by the program is owned by the program, and programs also have access to a dashboard, so they can analyze trends over time in terms of what kind of patterns of use they see, and that can also feed into our system planning work, besides the fact that people can get better access to services in real time. So, that's my presentation. In terms of the ask from you, obviously, it's awareness. It's a big thank you for your support of the homeless plan and the Thrive strategy. It's the launch support, so when this goes into the media, is that you're aware and are supportive of the work. There's going to be social media drive, so that we can make sure people find out about the app and its use. And you're all going to receive some little cards, info cards, business cards that you can give out to folks. So, when somebody comes to your office and says, "I need help with whatever," you can direct them to the app, as opposed to having to know all these things off the top of your head as well. So, that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments of our representatives? Counselor McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. So, in terms of getting this word out there, obviously, the media, but are you going to be going directly into the schools and taking advantage of that method of contacting people?
So, I'll speak from my perspective. I'm the social entrepreneur that developed it. I'm giving it to the community, right? And all I ask is that you cover your own operating costs, this $10 or whatever. So, it's all yours, in some ways. How you guys want to leverage it and how you want to get it out, I would look at leaders like you have in the room tonight, Selena with the food bank, you've got Jamie with the homeless-serving system, Denise with the college. You've already got a solid network of people with their own way of reaching in, so it's really just a way for them to do their work more effectively. So, rather than everybody having a list of their programs, you would have it all in one place instead. And I'm sure, if I point to Karen, that she might have ideas in terms of how Thrive itself wants to advance the use of this application, but I would say the sky's the limit. It's freeware, it's open source, so whatever you want to do and how you feel it's going to work best in the community, it's all yours.
Thank you, Counselor Samraj.
Thank you. I had a question. Obviously, from my work at the public library, I know that there's a lot of good social services in this community, but that trying to figure out where to go, just navigating the system is really complicated. How did you identify that this digital tool would be the best way to help people do that?
I developed it. And where did I get the idea? Like, doing all this work in community, this is the one thing that everybody talks about, whether they're, you know, the mayor of Medicine Hat, or whether they're, you know, Joe Blow looking for shelter tonight. This consistent need for access to real-time information is so obvious, and yet, I can look up the best Thai restaurant in Medicine Hat, open right now, and geolocate how far it is from me right at this moment. So, the technology I knew was there, its application to social issues wasn't. So, when you go into why that is, right, is it something technical, or it's because there's no money in it, because poor people can't pay for that, right? So, if you take the profit out of the equation, the technology's available and the innovation is possible. The minute you want to try to squeeze money out of poverty or homelessness, that's when it becomes a non-starter from a business perspective.
Thank you.
Counselor Friesen?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Karen, Dr. Turner, I've been to many of them, and I was there when Thrive was launched and so on, and I'm a big supporter, and I also agree with you about the technology. I've worked with the community for years and years and years, and seen many attempts at trying to have some kind of a document or something that would list the services of the community that were most pertinent to the people who needed them, and struggling with even trying to keep current phone numbers, let alone current lists of services and the changes and the people and all of that kind of stuff. It's been an ongoing challenge. I see real potential in this, because it is so much more easily updated, and especially if there is a consistent driving force behind it. So, I think that's absolutely key, and so I really commend you on that. I do have a couple of questions. My first one is, you talked earlier about the transferability with other communities, which I think is very laudable. I'm wondering, to what extent have you been able to use other communities' experience to help support and build your own, and the kinds of things you'll do in this community?
Well, I work nationally, and now it seems getting into international work. So, all of my work, I mean, most of my work doesn't happen in Medicine Hat. I'm in Yellowknife one week, I'm in Victoria the next, I'm in St. John's, I'm in rural communities as well. The issues are consistent, the types of programs are consistent, the confusion is consistent, and the lack of resources to actually overcome those challenges is not there either. So, in developing this while we're testing it with Medicine Hat, because you're in some ways much further ahead than, right, like, strike that off the record, but you're in some ways much more coordinated, right? Well, really, it's, yeah, you're aware, you're into innovation, you're open to this, I'm here, I'm not there, right? I have a relationship with this community as well, so that trust is there. So, if there is a bug, you know, you're not going to just do away with it. You're going to commit to telling me, "Hey, there's a bug, you need to fix this." So, you're putting in some time into this development as well. So, you know, we both have something to gain from it, and the applicability, like I said, the architecture for this, the same way that if you're familiar with Yelp or any other matching service that's online. It doesn't matter whether you're in Puerto Vallarta, I use Yelp, and, you know, today I use Yelp. So, the architecture is transferable, because the technology is translatable too. It has a built-in language shift, so we can make it work for Montreal and English-speaking Canada as well.
Okay, I'll just ask my other one. So, you talked a little bit about this community, this council, helping you with awareness as a thank you as well, and in your ability to successfully launch your support through social media and other ways as well. I just wondered if you, other than us receiving this presentation for our information, which of course we'll happily do, are there things specific that you would like to request from us at this point in time? You'll have others in the future, I'm sure, but at this point in time, in terms of building that awareness or the launch?
You know what? I might speak out of turn, but if agencies come at you and say, "I can't afford $10," cover their $10. I'm not sure, right? Or if you're funding agencies, requiring them to be on this directory, so that we have some kind of push and pull in terms of signing up for, I don't want there to be any barriers to it in terms of costs. I don't know if $10 is a barrier or not. And then the other piece is, like, if you're funding an agency and nobody knows it's out there, that's a problem for visibility and accessibility for people in poverty. So, if I were you as a funder, I would want my agencies to be part of something like this, to have that visibility to community members. So, those are two beyond what I said that might be of consideration for you.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Counselor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions either for the Executive Director or for you, Dr. Turner. You brought up the resources needed to solve poverty, and I was at the launch for Thrive back in February of last year, and it is a really interesting and ambitious project, and I think the way that you're trying to solve this thing is interesting. But part of me is concerned about the language that you use in talking about this project, ending poverty by 2030. I mean, that concerns me, because the amount of resources that you would actually need to solve that are pretty staggering, and a lot of that are beyond the control from this local community level. I mean, education, immigration from the rest of Canada or the rest of the world that comes in here, and we don't control our own borders. We're at the whims of a global economy that could go up or down, that would affect us here. So, I guess there's so many factors that we don't control. You know, how realistic is to talk about ending poverty by 2030? And I'm sure you're intentional in the way that you've chosen your words, but maybe you could speak to why you chose this kind of language.
Well, I mean, I'll jump from the external perspective, and then Karen can speak from the Medicine Hat perspective, but I would say from that viewpoint, you wouldn't have solved homelessness either. And I know that I've been watching your media, and I've been watching the concerns about that, people not being able to access services, but I also know the backend of what that looks like, and I know you've got zero wait lists in terms of your Housing First programs. I know that you've got a very short amount of stay in shelter, et cetera. From a functional end perspective, you're there, right? So, we need to document it, we need to define exactly what we mean around homelessness, and it's the same thing for poverty as well. So, just because, you know, you're seeing it today as an unachievable thing, you know, I would also challenge you to say, "Well, the United Nations and the United Nations' Development Goals around poverty are well underway as well." And some of the, you know, you might have read the recent Times article that was launched in terms of a positive view around poverty and saying that, "Well, the world overall seems to be, you know, Trumpified." We are seeing considerable progress in terms of third-world countries coming out of poverty, and some of them diminishing poverty by over half in the past 15, 20 years. So, I would say the 2030 is intentional, because it's aligned with the United Nations' Development Goals, so that 2030 is about that. And I would say, "Well, if any community can do it, it's the community that has ended homelessness." And we might not get to it, but if we get there, 70%, 80%, that's not a bad goal to have. So, it's a stretch goal for sure, but it's also a place where if anybody can do it, it's this community. So, I'll turn it to Karen.
So, I'm just going to build on what she said, and I guess one of my responses to you is, if we don't do it now, when will we do it? I think that's also a question. If not now, when? And we've already seen with the research that was put in the Thrive strategy, 1 in 10 citizens of Medicine Hat are dealing with poverty right now. So, let's start working. I think this application is a perfect example of looking at what community has and just coming up with a new innovative idea, just twisting it, shaping it, and coming up with something that maybe hasn't been done before. So, I encourage, it may look daunting, but at the same time, with some innovative, some effective and efficient delivery options, looking at the question just a bit differently, looking at option G rather than option A, it allows for some opportunities to arise. And I'm very excited to have Alina with us today, is to show how we, as a community, can support an initiative that just looks at things a bit different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch?
Thanks, your worship. Just a quick story and then a question. During the campaign, it was quite interesting. I'm out on the street, a couple rode up on bikes and said, "Where can I access services?" And it was kind of an odd question, and of course, I'm in campaign mode and we're chatting. But they literally biked in from Winnipeg, Manitoba, and I went, so after I picked up my jaw, I was quite shocked, and asked them, A, how did they arrive in Medicine Hat? So, their feedback was, "It's a very caring community," so compliments to us, obviously. But the other option that I was with was trying to connect them with services, and I know the phone book, the trusty phone book has that, et cetera. But this opportunity for this app absolutely would be a great ability for them just to connect instantly while they're on their bikes, rather than biking or wherever, you know, to get plugged in and get services. So, just a little bit of a compliment in regards to what you're looking at. I lived as an absolute example. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
The question?
Your question.
Very good. I didn't know if you want to comment. So, the question I had is, you mentioned about $10 a program. So, is that $10 a user fee? Is that $10 a contributing agency that wants to be on your app? Can you just expand that a little bit for me?
Yeah, no, for sure. It's $10 per program per year. So, it's basically going, so what I have to do is, I have to pay for the host, the hosting server in Canada, and then I have to pay for somebody to debug it, so a developer, and then I have to pay for somebody to be the help person on the phone, like, "Hey, it's not working," or "Can you sign me up?" or whatever. So, right now, I figured $10, if I get, like, quite a bit of mass, I can cover costs, I can cost-recover, and then somebody's like, "Oh, it's going to be huge, you're going to make all this money." And I was like, "I don't know about that, but if we do, then great, we'll take the money, we'll put it back, and we'll do the next thing with it." I really want it to be the social enterprise that can push us to apply technology in an innovative way to social issues. This is the first effort. If it works, fantastic, let's build on it. What else can we do? I have tons of ideas, but I don't have money. So, I put in my own money to do it up to this point. I'd love for it to be self-sustaining, because that's a success, right, that it's, that community sees value in it, and it's, you know, it's doing its own thing, it's its own entity and its own social enterprise, it has a separate corporate status, so if somebody doesn't like it, they're not going to sue me, they're going to sue the app. So, like, I've set everything up for it to be self-sustaining, and that's where I came up with this $10 per. Now, if I can bring it down even further or make it completely free, like, if some billionaire wants to donate it to, sure, let's do it. But as of right now, that's what the math looks like.
So, if I was to download your app, then I would be using your program, and then I get it for six months?
No, no, it's free for you guys. It's only the agencies that are registered. Yes, sorry.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, no, no, because that would be a huge burden on somebody in poverty to sign up for that.
Right.
So, no, it's only for the...
I just need to get that clarified.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for, yeah, clarifying that. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? I think you alluded to it, Dr. Turner, but who actually paid for this app to have, to create, I know, and you paid for it personally. So, it's not your foundation or it's not donation?
Have a foundation, no.
You personally paid for the development of this app?
Was that donating to a charity, and I thought this might be a better use of my funds.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Friesen?
I'll move the presentation for reception with a great deal of appreciation.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous. Thank you.
Our next presentation is item 4.2. This is 2018 Natural Gas and Petroleum Resources Budget Revision. And we have Brad Maines, General Manager of our NGPR, and Garth Glover, Business Manager. And this is part of the Administrative Committee Report of January 4th.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, and Happy New Year. NGPR is here tonight to present an update to our two-year budget, 2017 to 2018. With me tonight, I have Garth Glover. He's our NGPR's Business Manager, and he has put a lot of effort into the detail that we'll be going over with you tonight. So to summarize, steady is the course that we're on, but it's a very choppy sea and still very difficult market conditions for our conventional oil and gas business. We saw pricing through 2017 that none of us had seen in our careers and was far below what anybody would have expected. And it's still, we believe, fundamentally related to oversupply in North America. And unfortunately, that oversupply situation continues to increase and deteriorate our natural gas business. On the oil side, it was a year of wild fluctuations. Currently, the oil price has recovered from a U.S. perspective back into that 60 to low $64, $63 range. But of course, that's not the price we see here in Canada. We've read much and heard much about lack of export capability and the impact it's having on our business, and we're certainly seeing that here in the city of Medicine Hat. Although oil is a small proportion of what we produce, it is still a major driver in our revenue stream. So as we go through our update tonight, you will see the impact of, as I said, what was a difficult year when it comes to revenue and pricing. On the other side, we responded quite quickly in early 2017 to those deteriorating pricing conditions and put into place cost constraints. We looked at our entire budget from top to bottom. What do we have to do? What do we need to do? We, of course, addressed what we needed to do, and then we looked at what is optional and where we could. We have deferred those costs, and the budget will reflect that tonight. You will see that we were able to have significant savings over and above what we projected on the operating side. So we won't talk a lot tonight about the growth strategy with the exception of, as it pertains to the budget, but obviously, that's still a major focus for our division and one of our mitigation efforts to help us through what could be a more extended period of difficult time. The disposition, we had three of them in 2017 that we brought forth. We're seeing the impact of that disposition in this budget amendment in terms of both, primarily on the volume side, but we're also pleased to say that the actual impact on the revenue side is not that great, which says to us that our decision to proceed with what was effectively 25% of our production and of our gas reserves in 2017 from this point in time appears to have been a good decision. The amount of revenue we would have expected from those properties in this producing year was effectively almost minimal from our perspective. So although, we said, although we do see the volume drop, the revenue associated with it was not going to be there. So at this point, we believe that that was a good thing to do. With that introduction, I'll turn it over to Garth, and we'll go through some of the sides, and then both of us will be available for your questions afterwards.
Thank you, members of council. So key budget changes. As Brad has mentioned, we had our growth strategy was endorsed by council in 2016, but the implementation has gone a little bit slower than we expected. So we've made changes in our budget revision to reflect, we've had surface access issues, general industry conditions are a little tougher than we anticipated, so we're dealing with that as, right now. Natural gas prices are continuing to be low with the forecast in the future to maintain that low price. That's really a Canadian and a Western Canadian problem. We have nowhere to put our gas. That's not just in the city of Medicine Hat, that's everywhere in the West. And then we, as Brad had mentioned, we had a large divestment in 2017, and that resulted in a reduction in, mostly in volumes. As you'll see in a moment here, the actual revenue impact was pretty minimum. The impact to the balance sheet was quite large. So what are our challenges? Our challenges are technology. Technology has unlocked vast amounts of natural gas through shale plays. We, of course, are involved in sweet natural gas. This is the main driver for low prices, especially in North America for natural gas. There's just too much natural gas. We have a mature asset base, of course. The city has been involved in the oil and gas business for just over 100 years. Now, that's not to say that all of our wells are 100 years old, it's just to say that we have been around for quite a while, and we do have a mature asset base. And of course, just as an older vehicle or an older house, maintenance tends to be higher on older equipment. So those are challenges. What's our mitigation for this? Is, part of this mitigation is we have active portfolio management, so that was disposal of low profitability fields. We have our growth strategy plan, which is looking at deep oil and helium reserves. We are obviously pulling on the purse strings, as it were, to make sure that we maintain our costs, and we're maintaining our staffing positions as well. As noted in that last point, over the last few years, we have dropped our number of permanently established staffing positions by 10, which represents just over 10%. From a cash flow summary, there's quite a few numbers up here, but really, the column on the right, which is highlighted in a light brown, reflects the 2018 revised budget. That's what the budget has been amended to. And you can see there, between what was approved and what has been amended to, there's quite a drop in revenues, quite a drop in expenses, but that's a positive drop because we've actually reduced expenses in comparison to where revenues are going to be. And most of that is really related to the divestment of about 24, 25% of our natural gas assets, changes in our growth strategy plans, just the timing of execution of the growth strategy plan, and then obviously, making sure that we are following our preventative maintenance programs and maintaining our costs as best as we can. So you can see that the total change in cash flows is predicted to be about $37 million. That's above and beyond operating expenses. Overall, our operations will net a positive revenue of around $2 million. The rest of that cash flow is being spent on capital programs, which you'll see a slide here in a moment. So that's a combination of both maintenance capital to do with our current infrastructure, plus growth strategy capital for drilling and completing of wells, et cetera, et cetera. Also in that would be things that are of regulatory nature. That would be abandonment and reclamation of sites for where wells or compressors or pipelines are located. The commodity price had quite a large impact. In red, bolded there, almost a $10 million impact to our budget just on its own. So if we made no changes anywhere else and just said, "We're just coming forward with the budget revision or amendments," nine and a half million dollars just on price alone. Volumes, I've mentioned this, our gas volumes decreased overall by 28%. This decrease is between the original budget that was approved by city council for 2018 versus our revised budget coming forward today. So 28% decrease in natural gas, or, yeah, sorry, natural gas production. 25% of that is from the divestment. While we were going through a budget amendment, we took the opportunity to look at all of our fields and say, "Okay, are there any other little small changes we need to make?" And you can see there that we did decide in late 2017 to abandon the field in Saskatchewan. It's about 100 wells, so that was another percentage. Overall, on oil, our volumes are anticipated to decrease from the originally approved budget to today's presentation by 56%. 54% of that is the growth strategy. And as we've mentioned already, that's a volume reduction due to the timing of the execution of the growth strategy. Again, we took the opportunity to look at a couple other small tweaks, and most of those are related to our current, either operated or non-operated, oil properties where they also weren't able to do as much drilling as they anticipated, so their future volumes will be lower than they are, that they anticipated, excuse me. So what are the key takeaways? The key takeaways is that the growth strategy is critical to our future. Drilling is currently underway. It has been all through 2017. It continues in the first quarter of 2018, and it will continue throughout the rest of 2018. We do anticipate that by the end of Q2, so June-ish or thereabouts, we will be coming back to city council with a growth strategy update, because of course, as we drill through the winter, we should have, we'll be able to report on results at that time. Natural gases, gas prices, commodity price will continue to be low, and so we deal with that as we can. And then we obviously focus on cost containment. So when we talk about cost containment, Brad Maines had mentioned that we look to, if there's maintenance programs that we can defer, we will. But deferral just means you're kind of kicking that cost down the road a little bit. It will come into play. So for instance, if we're dealing with a compressor that needs to be overhauled, think of a big fancy, what's the word I'm looking for? Oil change on a big compressor. That's usually stated for, you know, let's say it's 30,000 hours. Sometimes you can get, you can go a little bit longer than that. No different than an oil change on your car, except it costs a lot more than 100 bucks, and you can't just go the local Jiffy Loop. One thing I want to note here is that we are 100% internally funded, so that is taking care of all of our operation costs, all of our admin staff, and our capital programs. So there is no need, at least at this time, and we're not looking to forecast that at all for any, at this point in time, for any loans. So that really is wrap-up of where our budget's at. You've got the briefing note was part of your package, which provides a little bit more details, and we'll now turn it over for any questions.
Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you. Just a second. I had a couple of additional comments to make. Just a clarification on Garth's note on the preventative maintenance. One thing we don't do is go beyond the manufacturer's recommendations, so it's just an important safety feature that we do look at. But we start, when we start looking at those maintenance programs, they're well in advance of that period of time, so I just wanted to clarify that. But the other issue and that we did want to talk a bit about was on the growth strategy because that is a material change in the program when we look at the reduction. We can't affect the price for natural gas. We can't affect the price for oil. But what we can do is we can drill, and we can look for that better future, more sustainable future, and eventually, hopefully, the return to a dividend for our citizens here in the city of Medicine Hat. We planned, when we went into the planning for the growth strategy, we made assumptions. A lot of those assumptions were based on industry conditions from many years ago. It's been a long time since anyone's been down in Southern Alberta drilling for new oil. So we had to make, we had to make some assumptions on timing. We had to make assumptions on the availability of staff, consultants who were skilled in this area. I believe we were enthusiastic in our assumptions from that perspective. It's taken us a lot longer to execute on the growth strategy than we would have liked. We would have liked to have been here tonight talking to you about material drilling, many wells that we've already completed. But frankly, 2017 took us all by surprise. In one instance, we've been waiting almost one year for a well license for one particular opportunity that we were looking at drilling. Historically, we would have expected that to be a four- to six-week period. It's a culmination of many things. We're encountering, in some cases, more surface resistance than we've seen in the past. Economic conditions in rural areas are different than we've seen in previous drilling programs. And those, in combination with regulatory changes, increased consultation requirements, which are both provincial and federally mandated, are all contributing to us not executing at the pace that we would like to execute on. But I wanted to make sure tonight, to leave a message with you, those reductions are not due to failure. We're quite happy with our program to date. We've drilled six wells. They were all raw exploration wells targeting very interesting opportunities. We're currently drilling our seventh well as we speak, and we expect to have six to seven more wells completed by the time we enter into the second quarter. So at that point, we believe we'll be able to come back and report back to council on our progress to date on that growth strategy, and hopefully, also talk about what we found both on the oil and on the helium side. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you. Well, that was the question I was going to ask you, because I think it's really important when we look at the budget and see that oil sales were planned to be $77 million. In fact, it was a $48 million hit there, and that's simply based on the fact that we didn't drill 12 wells, and therefore, we didn't get the production. So I appreciate you bringing that forth because sometimes, reading statements by the average citizen doesn't see that knowledge. So I have two, another question for you. I think when we watch television or we read the paper, and price of oil is at $64 US, buddy thinks, "Wow, that's like $80 Canadian." But there's a differential between WTI and Brent. So can you sort of speak to what we actually get? Because when I look at our budget here for oil pricing, we had budgeted for $55.88, and now we're down to $46.81. So maybe you could speak to that, because I think, not just council, but I think our citizens have to understand that this is a market thing that all of us don't always read and are knowledgeable about. Could you speak to that, please?
Senator Counselor. The oil price we receive in Canada, particularly here, and especially speaking specifically to the city of Medicine Hat, is affected by two things. One is the differential. And by this, we're referring to the price differential between those international barrels, which are usually referenced in Brent pricing, and then those, or the pricing that's received for the producers that are fortunate to be down in the Gulf Coast and in the Texas area, referenced at West Texas Intermediate. Generally, the West Texas and Brent trade within reasonable closeness to each other. Here in Canada, though, as we've talked much about, and I've said and heard much about, our export capacity is limited, and as a result, our pricing isn't as good. A, we have to pay to get that oil into those markets where it is manufactured and upgraded for the most case, and there's transportation costs associated with that. We've all heard the issues with the pipeline and pipelines. They are real, and they cost us money, and they're costing Canadians money, and they're costing Canadians jobs. As a result, producers have had to switch to rail. Rail is a much more expensive option. I won't go into any of the safety concerns around oil, the relative safety to pipelines, but in general, it's about an $8 to $10. So I've heard about an $8 to $10 number to ship that oil. So to cut to the answer for you, we receive about a $25 US discount currently to that $65 number. So here in Canada, we're experiencing around a $40 Canadian price, even at the $65, $64 US market price. It is a significant discount to that. The second factor associated with pricing for the city of Medicine Hat is our crudes are generally heavier. The majority of our production of oil comes from the Glock Sea, which sits right on the east side of the city of Medicine Hat. It is a much heavier crude. Heavier crudes certainly have a market, but they don't command the pricing you see for the lighter crudes that are so prevalent now in Texas, and then come out of the North Sea for the Brent pricing. So those two factors, the transportation, the distal discount, shall we say, and then also the product, the actual product itself, we just don't get as much money for it. However, without oil, we would be in a much more difficult situation as the city of Medicine Hat. We are making money on our gas, but we're not making very much, and there's some days we certainly are not making money on our natural gas production. We had a couple of days over the past winter where we actually were in a negative position. We had to pay people to take our gas away effectively. However, crude has been able, we've been able to make money on crude over the past year, and again, that's the main driver for our growth strategy.
year, and again, that's the main driver for our growth strategy, was we believe that oil has a much different future ahead of it than natural gas.
So the second part of that question would be then, can you, I know it's hard to look ahead, nobody has a crystal ball, but where do you perceive, we all know that the price of gas is just not coming back, I agree with you. The price of oil, you think we're going to stabilize? Is it going to? Because if we get to production and the price continues to rise even slightly, would certainly put us in a much better financial position.
When we first looked at the growth strategy initiation, we talked about making sure it was profitable at $35 U.S. The reason we said that at that time and place was that was a very strong possibility that we could see $35 oil for an extended period of time, and we wanted to make sure that any investment made by the citizens of Medicine Hat, it was going to be profitable at those prices. We also said, though, that we weren't expecting that case. We were expecting that we would see a wide range of trading in oil. I think the range we gave at that time was $40 to $60 U.S. We did predict that we would see run-ups in that pricing, and it's primarily driven out of the U.S., and it's turned, it's certainly become a swing producer when it comes to global oil production. Whenever that price seems to get in that $50 to $55 mark, that seems to be the economic hurdle for a lot of the U.S. drillers, and we start to see a lot of increased activity in the new U.S. oil fields on the shale plays. As a result, as soon as that pricing gets much above $50, a lot of that production comes on stream. It increases the amount available and depresses the price again, and pushes it back down into the $45 to $50 range. That's what we saw over the first, or sort of over the last two years, since we really saw the price collapse in late 2014. But what we're seeing this year, this one is a little bit different. We're seeing the pricing to levels that we haven't seen in two, two and a half years, up above $60. The U.S. rig count has responded, but it hasn't responded as quickly as we've seen in previous upswings. That could be for many reasons, more corporate discipline perhaps, okay, we've seen this before, oil's not going up, it's going to slide back down, so we're not seeing the rush that we've seen before from the U.S. into it. Or it could be other geopolitical factors that are probably and likely quite complex and difficult for anyone to understand. Where do I feel oil is going to be at this point and place? I think we perhaps have found a floor. That floor may be in the $50 to $60 range. We still believe the lack of global investment in oil is going to have a material impact on the global oil price, and we still believe, we don't know when, if it's 2019, if it's 2020, if it's 2022. At some point, lack of reinvestment in this industry from a global perspective, there's no abatement in the demand. It's going to result in a very significant rise in the price of oil. We want to be ready for that price increase with new fields to either profit from our production or through our divestment.
Thank you. It's really good that you do in a very simple manner, in a simple way, explain a very complicated industry. I just have one more question, and I noticed that you didn't mention, when we disposed of all those wells, that we brought our production costs down, and instead of losing money, we were actually making slate money. But there was another benefit, was there not, in the long-term liabilities that we were faced with the reclamation and abandonment of those wells?
Yeah, that's certainly the case. There were, when you take the three dispositions and aggregate them, we were looking at in excess of 1,500 wellbores. The city of Medicine Hat no longer is in control of. So from a book value perspective, the abandonment and reclamation, the ARO portion associated with that well, has been decreased or removed from our balance sheet. It can be talked about and seems to be just a number on a page, but when you actually go out and try and abandon these wells and reclaim them in today's climate, it becomes a very real number, a very expensive number. That said, however, we disposed of those wells to reputable companies. They had different ideas, different views perhaps on gas and where it's going, and we fully expect that those companies will very much meet all of the abandonment and reclamation obligations. I don't believe we would have transacted if we felt any differently about that. So we feel that the wells have been passed over to good operators that will follow through on them, and we, as the city of Medicine Hat, can focus on our higher-value fields.
But it's a big number, right?
It is a big number.
But can you tell us that number, or you don't want to tell me that number?
The number was--
Am I pushing you too far?
I don't know. Let me turn to our-- Yeah. It's, yeah, that was a nod, I think. Yeah, it was over $50 million associated with that field. So when Garth and I were looking at that at this year, and with the 15 million, 50, in excess of $50 million taken off of our balance sheet for properties that were expected to generate on the order of $300,000 this year in revenue, we believe at this time and place, that was a good decision.
Yes, sound. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Counselor Somrush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your presentation mentioned that the city abandoned 104 wells last year. I wonder if you could just clarify what that means when we abandon a well?
Certainly, Counselor. And for this, the abandonment of a producing gas or oil well has several stages, and they don't all occur at once. The production equipment, there's two sets of it. There's production equipment that exists down below the surface of the well, and then there's the conventional apparatus that you see on surface. Those are the wellheads, the pump jacks that you see as you drive through the country. So our first stage of abandonment is to go out and remove the downhole equipment that might be there, the downhole equipment that you can't see from surface. And then we actually set a plug, which is a, it's drillable, so you can always go back and re-enter it, but for the most part, we set what are called bridge packers, and these effectively seal off, they very, very effectively seal off, any of the gas and oil production from reaching the surface. So it's effectively, it's a plate that goes in, and then there's multiple meters of cement that are put on top of it, sealing the well. The second stage is when we come back and we actually remove the surface equipment, the tanks, the wellheads, and once those are removed, we move into the reclamation phase, which is where we return the lease that we've taken from the landowner, or the crown, be whichever, and we return that to its original state. The actual abandonment period, we abandoned those 109 wells over the course of about six or seven weeks. It was a very efficient program, and we like to do them in bulk, because we have economies of scale that we can take advantage of. The second, where we actually go in and remove the surface equipment, is actually quite a bit faster, and we can get that done. The actual reclamation, though, can take anywhere between approximately three to seven years. Unfortunately, our growing conditions here are not the same as they are in some other areas of the province, where reclamation can occur much more quickly. So we have a little greater challenge down here in southern Alberta to get things to grow, but eventually we do. And once those wells are reclaimed, a certificate is issued indicating that we have done our job, we have returned that producing property back to its natural state, and we no longer have responsibility for that operation. It's permanently sealed. Gas and oil is not, are not going to return to the surface after that point in 99.9% of the cases.
Thank you, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a question on the exploration of the new oil that we're looking for. Is this, maybe you don't know this until you find it, but is this oil going to be the lighter oil, or is it going to be that's the heavier variety? So you're looking at, the lighter would be obviously worth more money on the open market, and I hope that's what we're looking for.
Yes, yes, Counselor. Generally, the oil gravity's, the weight of that oil that we're actually looking for is lighter than what we are currently producing. We are targeting oils that are in this 30 to 35 degree API. It's a measurement unit for that gravity. The light oils that we see generally are up in that 40 or 50 API range. That's difficult to find down here in southern Alberta. The only area where we see that light oil is in many berries. It's very interesting and different petroleum system down there that has created a much lighter oil. However, we believe as we look for these deeper targets down here, it's going to be difficult to find that lighter oil. In all likelihood, we're going to see gravities in that 30 to 35 range. That said, it's still a very profitable product at that range, but we are limited from a geological and a geographical perspective in terms of what types of gravities of oil we could expect. But we're striving for the highest value product that we can with our dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if we could have a motion for reception. Oh, Counselor Hurst, did you have one?
Just a quick administrative question. So on the income statement, you have, under EBITDA, you have interest earnings, interest expense, and DDA acronym. What DDA is?
Depression.
Depreciation.
Depletion expense, yeah.
Yeah, very good.
It's associated with the, as we produce the well and produce the reserve associated with it, the value of that well decreases, so we have to account for that on our books, and that's where that DD and the reference goes to. It's the actual drop in value associated with our production.
So fair enough. So that'll be a non-cash expense essentially, though, so that's not a real tangible, you have to show it as a loss on the bottom line, but as far as the depreciation goes, that's not a cash expense rate, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If we could have a motion for reception of this presentation?
So moved.
Second.
All right. If we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Under public hearings, we have item 5.1, Bylaw 4458, a bylaw of the city of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw 4168, the city of Medicine Hat Land Use Bylaw. This is on page 14, and we advertised and have not received any submissions.
So we have to have a public hearing. If anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I will ask you second time, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. Now I'll ask you third and final time, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Are we going to do second and third reading right now? Okay, we get a motion.
So, Your Worship, I'll take leave to introduce Bylaw 4458 and move to have it read a second time.
Okay, I'll second it. Oh.
Any questions or comments on second reading? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
So, Your Worship, I'll take leave to introduce Bylaw 4458 and move to have it read a third time of past.
Second, Ed.
Any questions or comments on third reading? If we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, under reports, we have item 6.1, the Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting of December 19, 2017. This is page 23 of your agenda, and this report is for information.
I'll move that.
Second, Ed.
Counselor Friesen.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to ask a couple of questions regarding the first item, municipal response to cannabis legislation. There'll be lots of questions asked along the road, I know, but I just wondered through the chair, and I'm not sure to the CAO or perhaps to planning, I'm just not quite sure, but I know that, given the immense interest, public interest there is in this, and there's the for and against, unfortunately, we don't have a choice in that anymore. It's more how we're going to deal with it. I'd like to ask a couple of questions about it, and one is around the timing. I just, you know, we've been given this time, and we've been given a time by the province in July about when they're going to, you know, make all this come to fruition. Well, that's just a step down the road, really, when you consider an immense process like this. And I'm just wondering, you've outlined how we're going to deal with it. There's lots more details to come, and there's some really interesting pieces of information in this background document, but I'm just wondering how in the world we're going to meet that timeline in a way that is not going to be just thrown together? Now, I say that loosely, because I know you would never throw anything together, but, you know, when you look at the immense ramifications that we have to deal with with respect to this legislation, how will we ever be ready by July 18 in a cohesive kind of a way, including a very comprehensive public engagement process, engaging the public, letting them know about it, the communication around it, all of that kind of stuff? So I know that's a huge question, but I just, I really have a concern about that, and also from a budgeting perspective, because as often we have been in the past, we're faced with a situation of a legislated change that is made with the financial implications really passed down to where they're going to be implemented, and that's the municipality in that sense. Even when you look at policing alone, which I'm quite familiar with, it's ginormous. And yet, here we are, we have to do it, we have to do it right, we have to do it by July 18, and we have to pay for it. So I don't know if you can give me some enlightenment there.
Through the Chair to Counselor Friesen, I don't know how much enlightenment I can provide, but you've certainly done a very good job of outlining the challenge. Part of the saving grace, I believe, is that every municipality is going through this, and so fortunately, we have a very, very good network with, both within Alberta and across the country, and so we are leaning on each other in terms of exchange of information and trying to share best practices and all these sorts of things, and to be as ready as we can. The challenge, of course, is we don't know yet the provincial framework, so even as things are legalized on a federal level, what does it mean provincially, and what actually is it that we're grappling with on the municipal level? So yes, it's a big challenge. This briefing notice and attempt to outline the steps that we intend to take and the process that we will engage in to try and meet the challenge, but yes, it will no doubt be very challenging. It will also no doubt be somewhat iterative. So we will have something in place, and then we will have to continue to refine and make it better, and learn as we go in this process. We won't have a perfect system in place by July 1. I'm fairly sure that's too much for us to be able to promise. I may refer to Commissioner of DNI, who has drafted this briefing note for further clarification.
Thank you. Through the chair, I think the only thing I would add is the intent of having a focused consultation with the community. I think that's very important. One of the things that municipalities will have the ability to influence is the preferences and perspectives of the municipal citizens within the context of the legislation of the province and the federal government. So yes, we, there will be legalized marijuana, there will be regulations passed down by the province, but the city of Medicine Hat will be able to identify whether or not there's a requirement for separation distances between different types of uses to the different cannabis facilities, whether it's consumption or retail or whatever that might be. So there's, that's going to be a very important part of this process, is the level of consultation we do and the feedback we get from the municipality in terms of helping to shape some bylaws that will match the preferences of the community.
If I could just ask and follow up to my paying-for-it question, thank you very much. Is there any, any way we have a voice in advocating and lobbying as municipalities to try to recover some of the expense? I mean, it seems to me the federal government has pretty much said, I don't want to be overly critical here, but they pretty much said, well, we said you'd do it, now you go and do it, and we're going to claw back most of it. And I say that a bit tongue-in-cheek, but that's kind of what it sounds like to me. And so I'm just wondering, is there any way that municipalities are working together to build a business case to say, okay, we, of course, will follow the legislation you have established for us, but you know what? We need to have a better agreement in place about the financial ramifications.
Go ahead. Well, I think a lot of your questions should be directed at our MLA, and the sooner they get us these regulations, and we also work through AUMA and FCM. The Midside City Mayor's are also working on trying to figure out how to implement the regulations if they ever do come from the province. But, you know, we, I think as a council, we need to be talking to our MLA and saying, the sooner you get these regulations out to us, the better that we can handle this situation in our municipality, but--
You're absolutely right, and thank you for answering that. I think it's probably more appropriate you did. I see some avenues for us. The first one we should be doing is putting together a resolution for FCM. I hope it's not too late. But that's one thing we should be doing. FCM comes up in the spring. It's national, there'll be many, many other municipalities, well, all of them, facing these kinds of things, and I think we need to start creating a stronger voice.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Now, thank you, Your Worship. Just to add to your question there, Counselor Friesen, I did attend the Midcity's Mayor's Conference in Lloydminster, and we did send a letter to the province requesting a couple things, actually. One of them was that some of that funding would come our way, and the second was possibly at the start of this land rush, I guess you might call it, for people wanting to retail marijuana or cannabis, is that maybe we could look at limiting the number of outlets that would be-- maybe we could look at limiting the number of outlets that would be based on population. And I know today, I've seen a press release from the province of Saskatchewan, that they have decided to have retail outlets that are privately owned, but they're only issuing 40 licenses for the entire province, which can make things kind of interesting. My concern right now is that I know our planning department, they're being asked already to, you know, people want open businesses here, they want to apply for the right to sell cannabis, and of course, we can't accommodate them because we don't know what the rules are going to be because the province haven't told us, and, you know, time is running short, and that is a concern. And of course, I think to some degree, these folks that want to get into the retail business are kind of blaming the city because we don't have our ducks in a row, but it's really not us. And I guess we should maybe, I don't know if we should look at it as from a city's point of view of sending another request to the province, saying, you know, we need you to give us some rules here so we know where we stand, and I would like to see that, if we could do that as soon as possible.
Okay, Counselor Hirsch?
I just wanted to reiterate to council, at MPC, we actually asked the question in regards to what level of collaboration there was, and to the CEO's point, there's been tremendous consultation with other communities looking for best practices with regard to the physical development of some of these stores. The first step, quite frankly, was to insert the language into the bylaws and the land use bylaws, more specific, to include cannabis to the point where when people make application for their sort of stores, they also now fall into the special category, which we've now included in the inclusion of the language. So, that was step one. Quite frankly, and you noticed in the packet for MPC, there was two people that were against it. Those two individuals indicated, why aren't we just waiting for, you know, the government's queue, and then we'll react accordingly? Well, quite frankly, could you imagine the barrage of things that would have to happen in order for that to occur would be just absolutely mind-blowing. So, I applaud the fact that we're taking so proactive statements, measurements, starting with the inclusion of the language in the bylaws. The second will be obviously the development of planning strategies within this Community Medicine Hat, which we'll bring in, sorry, public consultation, you know, almost akin to where we have liquor stores. I mean, we certainly don't have the idea to have a liquor store next to a school. So, that's kind of the language and the discussion that I think we're talking about as far as best practices, and I certainly applaud, again, the proactive steps that we're taking. We are working absolutely collaboratively with other municipalities to look at best practices. Yes, the rules are set in stone, but quite frankly, I would argue the province or the feds really don't have a clue of what's going to happen. So, I think we can actually take a leadership role, develop our own set of rules that we think is appropriate for our communities, and I think that you'd certainly get a willing partnership with the province and the feds in that regard.
Thank you. Counselor Dumanowski?
Well, Your Worship, I had the opportunity to speak to this at committee level, but I do want to echo Counselor Friesen's comments that we have been handed a significant challenge. Every municipality has, and with vague, if not very few details. The timing is uncertain as well, and that makes it very difficult. We can't lose the emphasis about the public consultation piece that Commissioner Schwarzenberger, Schwarzenberger Prime, he alluded to. It's detailed in here, and I may be following my comments, so I'll ask a little bit of a question around that. But, so, as was identified, the Planning Commission has already looked at land use bylaws, and it's very explicit in each of the categories what it does not include in this particular case, the cannabis licensing. So, we start with that, and then we work our way backward. But, again, to go back to my earlier point, the public consultation piece will allow us to understand and develop moral, value-based frameworks that will overlay what comes down the pipeline, and whatever that might be, and we have to be prepared for that. But, I want to be certain, and speaking to this again, I want the public to be, become more and more aware of their critical role in developing that framework, and what is important to them, and how they want to see that ultimately overlaid with this legislation when it comes down. So, in the background information, it speaks to January 2018, and so I guess my question would be, where are we? Do we have any more details around that public consultation timeline? What kind of stakeholders are we looking at engaging, and how can the public be certain that they will have a voice in this process?
Want to go ahead?
Through the Chair. As you can appreciate, it's a moving target, this whole process from the three levels of government that are working towards a particular period of time for legalization. We understand that there needs to be a broad-based consultation with the community. We're looking at a variety of methodologies, from surveys online to taking advantage of trade shows as we have in the past, different ways of advertising the awareness. I don't think it's a big secret that cannabis legislation's coming, but the trick will be to get the message out that everybody has a voice, and they can make a difference in terms of shaping and influencing the local policy. So, it's a work in progress. I'm not sure I can share many more details than that at this point.
If I could just quickly, is it fair to say, then, that as we develop these frameworks, I mean, again, indicated in the land use bylaw amendments this earlier tonight, that we will basically create overly restrictive frameworks in each of these areas until such time as we open the gates, if you will? You're right. We have to have these things in place. We can't leave it to the last minute, and if we create these changes or amendments that are largely precluding any kind of use, we will be able to open those gates based on that framework that ultimately comes down from the province and/or the consultation that we receive from the public. Is that fair to say?
Through the Chair, that's exactly it. The bylaw amendments that were in front of council tonight, which were approved, were intended and will be gatekeepers so that no unintended approval slipped through the cracks, so that the authority and the ability to manage this in a logical sequential way still rests with council. We'll bring forward future recommendations for policy amendments, and they'll be through a public hearing process, and council will be able to weigh and make decisions at that time.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to Commissioner Schwarzenberger, please don't take this as negatively. It's not, but there are things that we know. We know we're never going to build them close to schools. We may not yet know the exact mileage or footage. We know that we're not building it near liquor stores. We know certain aspects that we're not going to put them into residential areas, right? So, if we're going to have a public consultation, what is the public asking? Those very same questions. How close to schools? How close to liquor stores? How close to my neighborhood that I live in? I don't want my children in the playgrounds being, watching somebody buying cannabis. So, I think, and I know you have lots on your plate and lots of work, but I think some of these things we should start now, because those are the questions that our citizens are going to ask us. We don't have all the answers yet, but we know that we're in agreement that we will never build them near schools or these playgrounds, et cetera. So, we could sort of get this framework ready for when they say it has to be two miles between them, or it's got to be so many feet from a school or whatever that comes down. So, then the changes are easy. It's getting that input from our citizens that we can answer all but the exact distance. So, I just think that, I think they're right. July is five months away, five months, and we've got lots on our plate in our city, not just the cannabis thing. So, that would just be my suggestion. I think we should start that process of getting our public and citizens involved now, get that input. We can't ask, we won't be able to answer all the questions, but we can agree on certain factors. So, that's just my opinion. Thanks.
The CEO, would you like to?
Through the Chair. So, to Counselor Turnbull, that is what we're doing. We're going to the public now. We're not waiting for further clarification, but it does, things like how many licenses are going to be issued in this community matters, because if we're talking one, then we can probably talk about some optimal location somewhere. If we're talking 50, then it becomes a whole different puzzle to find out where they should be located. So, there's a lot that still needs to be understood from the provincial legislation and the way it's rolled out. But absolutely, we are starting, that's why we're talking about starting public consultation now as opposed to waiting until after regulations are in place.
No, I think your point is absolutely well-taken, but I'm assuming we, as a municipality, will have the authority to decide how many locations we can have, and hopefully, we do, but maybe we don't. But we still know right now, doesn't matter that we don't have all the locations. You're not going to be near a school. We're going to mandate that, right? That's the input. We're not going to be playgrounds. We're not going to be in residential areas. So, we can at least bring it down to a workable, that when the rules come down, that we can just jump all over it. So, that was just my thoughts.
Counselor Samraj?
Thank you. I think the city solicitor might be most able to help me answer this question here. There's a note here that says, where the authority is provided, should local restrictions exceed those put in place by provincial regulations? I guess I was just curious, under what circumstances can our local rules kind of go above and beyond what the province mandated? I had one example in mind. There's some talk that you will be allowed to smoke cannabis in public. Would we be, as a community, be able to say that, no, you can't smoke in public? Thank you.
Well, the, any bylaws that the city passes could not be inconsistent with any provincial regulations or provincial laws. So, to that extent, we have to pay attention to that. But we can, we can set stricter rules, generally speaking, in bylaws than what we find in provincial legislation. That's not considered to be inconsistent.
So, a good example would say, the provincial government says that you cannot have a dispensary within 200 meters of a school. We could pass a bylaw making it 300 meters, but we couldn't go 199 would be an example.
Correct.
Okay. Is that okay? Counselor Hirsch?
Or to the extent, you can't smoke it within 10 meters of doorway of a public domain versus, you know, kind of how the smoking bylaw was. So, back to Counselor Turnbull's consideration and concern that we're on it. In fact, that's exactly the piece, and that's why you saw the language changing. That's why you're seeing, and I'm really very pleased how proactive we are. And in fact, getting to the point of public consultation is going to be huge, no different to if they allow us to have 20 licenses in Medicine Hat, do we argue that you'd have one in every southeastern, northwest quadrant, or do you have them just in a cluster? That's going to be some dialogue that's going to have to happen, and I think at the end of the day, that's where I really am looking for the public's feedback in terms of, okay, if we treat this like any other commodity, if you will, because it is going to be legal, you know, you can argue aside. Having said that, it's no different than maybe alcohol in terms of, you know, prohibitive substance in some degree. You have to be 18, et cetera. So, I think, you know, I look forward to the public dialogue. It absolutely is happening. We're proactively changing the language to make sure that people are aware, if they even have thoughts of starting the idea of an application, that they want to jump ahead of the curve and be ready for an application if, in fact, it does come forward, and whatever that looks like. But we're well-prepared in our dialogue, in our language, to accept that when and if that's to come. So, I'm really happy in terms of our progress.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Our next report is Item 6.2, the Administrative Committee Meeting of January 4th, 2018, page 29 of the agenda, and both these items are for adoption. So moved?
Second.
We dealt with item number one earlier. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under Reports for Reception, we have Item 7.1, the Heritage Resources Committee Meeting of December 12th, 2017, and this is page 44 of your agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next, we have bylaws for second and third readings. Item 8.1, Bylaw 4457, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend Bylaw 3007, the City of Medicine Hat Municipal Planning Commission Bylaw, and this is page 47 of your agenda.
If you could move it first.
Your Worship, I wish to take leave to introduce Bylaw 4457, wish it read a second time.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments on second reading? Counselor Turnbull?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Sorry. Thank you, Your Worship. I have a real problem with changing the quorum to four, because when developers or people looking for permits come forward and you get a tie vote, then that permit is not given, and now the party has to go to the appeal, and that's another 30-plus days delay. And so, I think it's really important that five, as a quorum, always gives you a 3-2 vote. And I think it's the proper governance. I don't think we should change that. So, it would be my wish that we would send this back to committee or table it, whatever is the appropriate decision. I'm not sure what that is, so...
Okay. Counselor Hirsch?
So, I appreciate, and Counselor Turnbull and I had a little chat before in regards to the concern, and I think I just need to outline, the idea beyond it in terms of reducing the quorum was to, quite frankly, pay attention to developers and their timeframes, any applicants, for that matter. We want to be respective of their timelines. Having said that, you do introduce an interesting angle in the fact that there might be in a potential situation where if it's deemed a bit of a contentious issue and that goes to a tie vote at 2-2, it dies. And then, what ends up happening, as we discussed, any application made to MPC can be appealed to subdivision and appeal board, but that's another 30 days or whenever it sits next. So, you know, we're in a push-pull situation where we try to be adaptable and flexible to the needs of the applicants. So, I think what would be best course of action would be for maybe for us to take it back, have a little bit more discussion about it, and figure out an action plan. So, as we discussed before, I think if you're comfortable with that.
I think the Chair can just request to take it back, or Acting Chair is yourself.
Well, certainly, I can take it back with that sort of observation and opinion, and we can have another crack at this at the committee level, and we'll come back with a potential amended version. We'll obviously consult with our legal department and figure out a plan that makes sense for everyone. So, I can certainly take it away.
Counselor Turnbull? Okay. Counselor Dumanowski?
Well, Your Worship, I don't want to take away from the Acting Chair's ability to take it back, but my parting comment would be that tonight, Counselor Varga is absent, and we have an even number, and we are making decisions that could possibly be defeated by virtue of a tie vote. I think, I haven't sat on MPC for some time, but typically, the process, I'm not saying is one way or the other. There are contentious topics, but typically, it's guided by very clear planning directives. I think what you're attempting to do here is respond to the need, in rare circumstances, to associate quorum with four so that you can move your agenda forward. My sense would be, and I say this with a little bit of guardedness, if there's a contentious issue, there probably would not be four people there that day. There probably would be more than four. And so, you will likely, if ever, have a situation where it's going to end up in a tie on a very contentious issue, if not, in most cases, lend itself to a unanimous vote or a very strong vote. So, I think if your main goal was to achieve quorum, because of some of the background here citing challenges with that... here citing challenges with that, I think it's okay to move ahead with this. We, we often have this happen even at committee level, even the police commission sometimes, we have minimum quorum, but we move ahead. Now, I recognize it's a tie one in, in policy, if you, if you do that, or in bylaw, but I think it's going to be so rare, if not ever present, or a challenge that I, I don't see it being an issue. Those are my parting, parting comments to you as you take that back.
I would entertain a motion to take it back to committee by anybody.
Your Worship, I'll, I'll make that motion, and not, and not to take away from very good legitimate discussion, I think we'll have a chance to do that when the committee brings it back with their further thought and recommendation. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, secondor. So you want to talk about that motion to get back? Okay. Counselor Turnbull, so you're okay?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Counselor Hirsch, you're okay then?
Just a, just a comment in the fact that, so the intentionality beyond it is to make sure we in fact do have quorum, that the meeting can commence. And we actually had two instances in the last five meetings that I attended where some gentlemen were actually out of town, and, and another one couldn't make it based on their occupation. So it is actually based on, if you can imagine, the, the individuals that sit on the committee at the time during their terms might have conflicting schedules, might have occupations that might work for them to come sometimes and it doesn't. So quite frankly, in the rare exceptions, it's becoming more than rare. So that's why we're, again, we'll take it back, we will absolutely look at it. Nothing, this isn't, this is just simply housekeeping. We want to ensure that we deliver the best services and responsiveness to the, to the Citizens of Medicine, Medicine Hat. So I'm pretty confident we can come to a mutual satisfaction. There's actually a, an idea on the table that I think we're going to run with, and we'll bring it back to you after we get resolution, so.
Okay. So we have a motion and a secondor to refer it back to committee? If we could vote on that? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, we have a new business, 10.1, declaration by this council that Monday, August 6, 2018 is a civic holiday.
Counselor Friesen.
Your Worship, members of council, I move that City Council declare Monday, August 6, 2018, a civic holiday pursuant to Section 56 of the Municipal Government Act.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, if we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you. Seeing no more business for this council, we're adjourned.